This meeting is called to order. This is the September 24th meeting of the Board of Selectmen. They have a motion to approve the bills, payrolls, and warrants.
So moved second.
Okay, motion second, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Votes are voted. They have a motion to approve the minutes of September 10th. So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And three announcements. Does anybody have any announcements this evening? We do have one. Spear to Shrewsbury is happening this weekend. It actually started last weekend with the grand marshal dinner. Saturday will be all the activities around Oak Middle School and some other places. There's programs in the town hall, but the big tent will be out up in, I believe, the craft fair is in the cafeteria.
It's either the cafeteria or the gym.
Oh, somewhere over there. And then Sunday will be the parade, and if I get this right, there is going to be food and tent after the parade this year.
There's a pizza contest.
Yeah.
Best pizza in Shrewsbury, I hear.
There you go.
Fantastic.
Maybe it'll help move the-
We're all invited to stop in and have a slice.
Maybe it'll help move the parade along a little quicker because people want to get something to eat. So anyways, it's a great affair. It's been going on for over 20 years. It seems to get bigger every year, so we encourage everybody to go out and see what it's about. Anyone else? No? Mr. Mizuka, do you have anything?
I do. I'm very pleased to be able to announce some grant awards that the town has received over the course of the past few weeks. The first is a Department of Justice Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant Award for $2,675 to the police department to aid in our bulletproof vest program for officers. The second is a Federal Emergency Management Agency Fire Protective Services Grant of $14,286 that the department will use to help with the installation of smoke and CO detectors in individuals' homes for fire prevention and safety. And finally is a FEMA grant, which is a SAFER grant that the town has applied for several years for, which will provide assistance and funding for firefighters. And that grant totals over, a little over $570,000 over the course of the next three years as with the first two years providing 75% funding from the feds and the final year providing 35% funding from the feds with town matches. So there's a lot of hard work that goes into all these grant applications, and we're very thankful for that work and pleased to be successful in those efforts. And just one final note that we have rock salt bids in for winter, which is coming right around the corner. They're up about one and a half percent over the previous year, which is something that we can certainly manage, especially with our ability to hold more salt in reserve in the new salt shed. They came in at 47, 45 per ton for our primary bidder this year, so we're moving forward with the execution of those contracts.
Won't be long before we need it. Okay, anything else? No? Okay, it looks from here like it's 7:05, so we have a public hearing with BW Shrewsbury Operations LLC, DBA Buffalo Wild Wings 476 Boston Turnpike regarding an application for change of ownership interest to their Section 12 All Alcohol Restaurant Liquor License. Is there anybody here from Buffalo Wild Wings? Good evening. Would you like to just come up, tell us, introduce yourself and tell us what's happening?
Thanks. Thank you for having me. My name is Mike Bailey, and I am the managing partner of BW Shrewsbury Operations. We've been in your community for like seven years now, and thank you for having us. We have, this is change of ownership, I think, is a bid for the misnomer. We're changing a new entity, but it's still the same ownership people. So still the same folks. And I'm told it's beyond my pay grade, but that's for accounting and tax purposes, also for insurance purposes. So we have five restaurants in the state, and we're doing this with all of them rolling into, I guess, a holding company. So if you saw the application, I think it was extremely thick.
Right.
And after page five, I said, all right, that's why we're paying those guys money. So I'm happy to field any questions. Hopefully, we've been a good neighbor and partner in the community.
Yep, okay. Anybody have any questions? Nothing else changing the operation, nothing?
No, same management team, everything's intact.
Hours?
Everything's the same. Hours of operations, everything's exactly the same, but the food's changing. New menu coming out, so come and see us.
Still going to have wings?
Oh, God.
Just wondering.
Better.
Did anybody else have any questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to be heard on this? Okay, there being none, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to close the hearing?
Second.
Okay, have a motion, second, to close the hearing, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Now, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, ma'am, motion second. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. There you go. You're all set.
Thank you. They asked me to mention one thing, I think, to the clerk's office. There was a subsequent to the application being sold, there was a follow-up letter, and it said something to the effect that they had wanted to make sure that the corporate vote, which was page 79 of the application, had a date of meeting listed. I think it was omitted, so they wanted August 7th, and that the change of ownership interest box was checked.
We'll take care of that.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Yep.
The clerk.
Okay. We've got a couple of minutes. Why don't we jump down to new business? Item eight is to review and act on a one-day beer and wine license for, no, I'm going to hold on that one. Why don't we jump down to, how about item 12? Because that'll go crazy. Review and act on road race request for the ninth annual turkey trot for the memory road race on Thursday, November 28th, 2019, at 8:00 a.m., beginning at the Town Common and ending at the intersection of Route 140 and Prospect Street.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, motion second, any further discussion? There being none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Aye. Squeeze item 13, review and act on the one-day all alcohol license request of Joe Yosef, St. Mary's Orthodox Church, One Industrial Drive, for a wedding on Saturday, October 12th, 2019, from 7:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, the second, any further discussion? There being none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Can you see that? I can't tell what time it is.
7:08.
What time do you want it to be, Ma?
7:10.
7:10, I worry.
7:08, I'd say.
All right. What? Oh, okay. Sorry, okay, well, we can move on. I didn't realize that. I thought the first two were hearings. Okay, so our next order of business is a meeting with Whole Foods Market Group, Inc., 193 Boston Turnpike Unit 1100 regarding an application for change of officers, directors, LLC managers to their Section 12 All Alcohol Restaurant Liquor License DBA, the Bagadi Bar at Whole Foods, and Section 15 All Alcohol Package Store Liquor License DBA, Whole Foods Market. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Ian Erkhardt. I'm from, I'm an attorney for Whole Foods, and I'm from Narder McLennan &amp; Fish in Boston. And I'm here before you today to, you know, make some changes that you just highlighted to our Section 12 Restaurant Liquor License and our Section 15 All Alcohol Package Store Liquor License at the Whole Foods location at 193 Boston Turnpike in Shrewsbury. So this is just a bit of corporate housekeeping. You know, we're making some changes to the officers of the licensee and then to other upstream entities from there. We're only introducing, you know, we are making changes to three entities, but we're only introducing two new individuals. And those folks are Keith Manbeck, who's the CFO of Whole Foods, and Heather Stern, who is the General Counsel of Whole Foods. So everything's in the application. I'm happy to run through the specifics of the changes to the entities, if you'd like me to do that.
I don't think it necessarily wants, anybody wants to hear that?
It was all in the package, wasn't it, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I thought so.
Which we all read very studiously. No, we're, it's just mostly internal paperwork, right?
Yes.
And you have to change your filing with the state.
Yep, we're just moving some officers around. You know, it's really just moving responsibilities, corporate responsibilities between legal and operations and treasury.
Okay. Okay, we, this isn't a public hearing, so the board can choose to act on it as they wish, so what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, the second. Any further discussion? There being none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Voted. There you go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, our next order of business is a meeting with the Shrewsbury Town Center Association for an update on the progress of that organization and to discuss the Yuletide event on December 7th, 2019. Good evening. Would you like to come up?
Good evening.
Welcome back, Mrs. Miller.
Thank you.
Not often you got to sit on that side of the table, right?
I don't think I've ever sat on this side of the table facing the people of the Selectmen. Oh, yeah, actually, I did prior to being a Selectman, so it's been a very long time, but.
Evening. And this is Lynch, Mary Beth Lynch? In the Shrewsbury Town Center Association? So, Joshell.
All right, well, I'm going to turn over to Mary Beth.
Sure. So we're here to talk about the Shrewsbury Town Center Association. I'd like you to start by mentioning the mission of the STCA is to improve, enhance, and foster economic and cultural development in the Town Center District of Shrewsbury. We are a group that was formed about a year and three or four months ago, and it was a grassroots movement that started with local businesses and local community members feeling that the time was ripe to start a formal organization around trying to bring economic and cultural development to downtown Shrewsbury. And so we started as a small group and have grown and are very excited to talk about some of the things that we have planned. And we feel very passionate about it, and we've had a lot of great help from the Board of Selectmen and Town Hall, so we wanted to thank you for that and talk to you about some of the exciting things. Most pointedly, the Yuletide market that's coming up on December 7th.
Right. So I think, as you guys already know, the STCA is planning what we're calling the Yuletide Market. As Mary Beth said, December 7th, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., and it will be held in the Town Common area and the parking lot of Champa Funeral Home. If you've, we're patterning the Yuletide Market. I think it's something different for Shrewsbury. It's been patterned off of the Christmas markets that you may see in Europe. Also, these types of markets are in New York and Chicago. So it's designed to be an outdoor venue, celebrating the holiday season. We have a variety of vendors who will be selling various products, things that people might want to buy or think about for holiday gift-giving. We have food trucks to provide food. We have a beer vendor that we're very happy has chosen to help us out, and that is Paul Wenjender of Greater Good Brewing. It's located in Worcester, very popular craft brew vendor. And he and his people will be there selling beer, so we'll have a little beer garden area. We also, if you envision this, it's going to be sort of pop-up tents and lights and holiday music. We have a variety of different entertainment-type things planned. The Congregational Church, they're very excited to participate. Their choir will be singing some holiday music. The bell ringers will be performing. We're working right now to get one of the elementary school choirs to perform, and hopefully, maybe the a cappella from high school. So we're working on a number of those types of things to go on. And so we see this is sort of, again, 48 p.m., all-inclusive in the Town Center area, opportunity for people to come out, celebrate the holidays. It immediately follows the library's event, which is on the same day. And the library, for years, has done like photos with Santa. So that would end, and then we would hopefully see some people, you know, flow over from that and others from throughout the community. So I'm not sure if I got anything in there, but that's the concept. And we're very, very excited to have, you know, we're still soliciting some vendor participation, but we are getting close to be in capacity for what we have here. So it's been very well received by the community to this point.
Great. Do you have another project you worked on? You want to tell us about that?
Oh, the lighting, yes.
Sure, yep. Sure, so it became apparent to us as we kind of dug into the logistics of the day, the evening, that it would be wonderful to have the opportunity to be able to light Christmas, or I'm sorry, to light trees in downtown Shrewsbury. And up until this point, that's never happened because there wasn't the capacity to have, there was no electricity spread throughout the commons. So in a series of conversations that we had, we recognized that there would be a need for it and understood that there was a cost associated with that. And through the help of Michael Hell from Selco and John Laverdy from the Electoral Inspector's Office, along with Kevin Mizuka, we had a round discussion about how we could make this happen. We decided that approaching local businesses would be a very quick and easy way to see if there was anybody else interested, and within a couple of days, we had raised $5,000, which was the cost of the entire operation. So we were able to get it to happen very quickly, and I'm happy and pleased to say that all of the work has been done. There is now electricity to the Town Commons, and we just received yesterday or the day before a schematic on where the boxes are, which they're located next to each tree, incidentally, in the commons. So we're very excited, and we will have an official lighting the commons at the beginning of our event for the Yuletide market, starting at around 4:00 o'clock. So it should be an exciting time for Shrewsbury, and we will see the commons lit up in lights, and we think it's a very exciting thing.
Great, sounds like fun. Anybody have any questions?
Quick question. How many stalls or slots did you have? You mentioned you were just about sold out.
So right now, let's see, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. I think about 10 is probably where. Actually, we had 10 in mind, eight to 10, when we started this because we thought we're going to start small and, you know, hopefully, this is going to be an annual thing, and we'll grow this. But we will be actually tomorrow morning out measuring once again the space in the parking lot. So if we're able to add more, we will, because we have had some interests that we've kind of put on hold until we're sure that we can accommodate the space. So that's just for the event. It will call the pop-up vendors selling their products. Then there's an area, and you have a map that was included with the license for Greater Good, but the food trucks will be, that's a separate area. And then we've got the beverages, you know, sort of in a different area. So there's quite a bit of room back there in the Champa parking lot, and then we see a little bit of spillover for some of the entertainment into the common area, you know, hopefully, whether permitting, so.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Sounds fantastic. I can't wait for it, and I know you had said it's all kind of weather, doesn't matter.
Yep, no.
Will people need tickets, or is it just walk in and enjoy? So no tickets are needed?
No tickets needed.
No, only for, so it's, there's no fee to attend, right? But if people want to purchase alcoholic beverages, then there will be tickets. So we'll be selling tickets for that, you know, and IDing people in armbands and have a process for that. And then if they want to purchase food from the food trucks, that transaction will be happening directly with the food truck vendors. But people can attend, listen to the music, walk around free of charge.
Okay, anyone else?
Sounds great.
What's the last?
I just wanted to thank the Town Center Association for their help with the Town Center visioning process, which was a planning process that we undertook in 2018 through 2019 related to the Town Center and the Beal School. This group was instrumental in providing input to that process as well. So thank you and your group for that.
Thank you, thanks for mentioning that. Okay, anything else? Okay, well, good luck. We'll look forward to hearing more about it in the future. And let us know if there's anything we can do to help.
Great, thanks very much.
Thanks.
Okay, the next order of business is to review and act on a one-day beer and wine license for, this is John Ethea.
He's the manager of the event.
Oh, okay. Greater Good Imperial Brew Company for Yuletide Event on December 7th, 2019, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Shrewsbury Town Common and Champion Funeral Home at 5 Church Road. So, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, the second. Any further discussion? There being none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted.
Great.
Okay, next order of business is to discuss the pay-as-you-throw, which actually the trash and recycling pickup routes, an adjustment in some of the routes effective October 21st, 2019. Mr. Mizuka, do you have anything?
I do, yes. I would like to just run through a couple of slides for the board and for the benefit of those at home. And we can hopefully start off by explaining what we're hoping to achieve. So as everyone knows, we have moved to a new hauler, and we had some struggles at the beginning, specifically as it related to our Thursday routes. And what we have up on the screen right now is the number of households that are picked up on a daily basis for each day of the week. In the box that's shown on Thursdays, the top line is the current and then the proposed route distribution after we seek to make these changes, or after we'll be making these changes. So on Thursdays, you can see that we had 2,645 households in the current plan, and that was over 52% greater than our shortest day, or least number of households, which is Monday. So, you know, it's a 30% increase over, you know, from going from the Wednesday route to the Thursday route. But there's 915 more households on Thursday than are shortest day on Monday. So we're attempting to rebalance those routes, both from a number-wise and geographically, which I'll try to depict through a later slide. So we're basically, what we're actually doing is shifting 886 households to bring collections closer to the average, which would be 2,036 a day. So if you see up on the screen, Wednesday routes had approximately that amount, 2,035. I went back and reviewed the records over the past few months, and on average, we finished those route days around 4:00 for Wednesdays. Monday routes, we were actually wrapping up as early as 2:30. And Thursdays constantly lingered into the evening hours of 5:30 or 6:00 o'clock, which not only, you know, challenges the residents to know whether or not their trash was picked up for the day because it's a little later than normal, but this time of the year, and as we move into the future weeks, it gets a little darker, and it's just not as safe for everyone to be out there. So we're looking to really smooth out the total number of households on a daily basis. There's a disproportionate effect on the Thursday and Friday routes. So we're always one mechanical issue or one delay at the incinerator away from not being able to collect everyone's trash on the day we promised to do that. And disproportionately, those impacts have been Thursday folks that weren't picked up, and then Friday households that were delayed because Thursday spilled over into Friday. So that's the assessment that's taken place over, really, the last few months and extending back into the spring as we worked with the new hauler, and we're looking to make those changes now. So communicate, if you could change the slide, unless there's any questions specifically, please let me know. So we understand first and foremost, on any project like this, communication is the key. So on the screen right now, we have our schedule for communications over the course of what's really four weeks, starting this week and extending into the proposed route change day, which would be October 21st, 2019, is when the new schedule would begin. Over that course of time, starting this week, if you want to go to the next slide, we're going to be taking a number of approaches to get the word out. We'll be doing some general outreach throughout the course of this week of, you know, through the 25th, through the end of this week. We'll have website postings, social media postings, and general code-red messaging throughout. So starting next week, we're actually going to make our first of three hand-delivered flyers to each one of those 886 households that will be impacted. So if you're going to be impacted by these changes, we'll be hanging flyers on your door, attempting to make personal contact with you with EPW workers out in the field. They'll be wearing bright yellow vests and be carrying other ID with them and have their letters explaining the situation for you. So we're going to do that once a week, again, for the next three weeks. And starting the week of October 14th, we're going to start our targeted code-red messaging, where we're able to geographically and through other listing methods just make phone calls to the houses that will be impacted. And then continuing in the first week of the changes, the week of October 21st, starting the evening of Sunday, the 20th, we'll place evening messages to those households reminding them that tomorrow is their trash day, and please have your materials at the curb by 7:00 a.m. So Val, if you could move forward. And this is the exact notice that we'll be sending to residents. So this is a notice that would go to a Gulf Street resident that would be impacted. At the top, you can see it states that their current collection day is Wednesday, their new collection day will be Monday, the effective date of October 21st, 2019, and that this will be their new trash day going, trash and recycling day going forward. And just a friendly reminder, if they have any other questions, where they can reach us in the office and to have their materials at the curb by 7:00. And here is a list of exact streets, and all this information will be posted through a newsflash by tomorrow morning or early tomorrow, so residents can start to get comfortable whether or not that they're impacted. So you can see across the top, the homes down the first column are currently Wednesday homes. Those houses would be shifting to Monday. There's some Thursday route homes that would be shifting to Tuesday. Some other Thursday households that will shift to Wednesday, and some Friday households that will shift to Thursday. So one may ask why there would be routes being shifted to Thursday, and that really relates- relates, again, to balancing all the routes out. And then if you could go to the next slide, which is going to be a little bit hard to see, but this is how geographically our routes lay out. And I know it's very difficult to see, but one of the things that struck us as we were really reviewing this during the transition period was, there's a lot of dead-end streets, for instance, off of Maple Avenue. And those dead-end streets were not being picked up the same day that Maple Avenue was being picked up. So we actually had trash trucks on Maple Avenue two times a week, whenever we're now, we'll now be able to reduce that down to just one. So all the dead-end streets used to be on one day and Maple Avenue proper was another. So this is something that we'll fix geographically. So there was also some strange arterials that extended up into different sections of the community that were not adjacent to other aspects of those route days, and we're fixing that from a geographic standpoint as well. So we tried to be as least impactful as we could, but be very thoughtful, knowing we have one and only one opportunity to really make this change. I think those routes had grown over years and had grown due development, not due to any proactive planning. We tried to keep it as least disruptive as possible, and this is the plan that we've come up with and will be doing our best to communicate between now and October 21st, when the route changes will go into effect.
Okay, questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Kevin and I have had lengthy conversations on this, and I give him credit for bringing it forward because he, as the manager, thinks it's the way that he, the path he needs to take to deal with the nuts and bolts of picking up trash. I see it slightly different. The recent rebidding of the solid waste contract was an open contract. These folks, Waste Management, were substantially lower in their competitive pricing, as I recall, much lower than the incumbent. And yet it was still an increase in the cost of the system in order to effectuate the pickup. They completely and utterly botched the transition. We had a full commitment for communication, we had a full commitment for all this, and they simply apparently failed to communicate or appropriately staff their own operations, not the residents perhaps. So I look at this as, why should we, or why should any resident of Shrewsbury have to now worry about when their trash picked? To me, this is just one of those things that happens in life. The other incumbent did it, I think, with a high degree of success. I'm a Thursday route person. I didn't hear any issues relative to lost pickup. Now, maybe people simply didn't call me or tell me. That's fine. But I don't know how I can sit here this evening and think that they will somehow transition all of those households and streets, when they couldn't effectively pick up the trash for a contract that they read and they bid. And then they had more excuses along the way as to how they simply couldn't drive a truck up a street and pick up trash and recycling. So I understand the manager finds himself in a difficult position because there isn't much public admiration for waste management at this point. But he feels that he needs to do this in order to accomplish more effectively the basic mechanics of municipal government. But I ask him to reconsider it based on the disruption to folks in town. And secondly, I'm wondering if we won't be horribly embarrassed once again by Waste Because last I knew, the issues we had at the beginning of this transition weren't just Thursday or Friday. They managed to offend people five days a week. All this information was in the bid. In my opinion, they failed to staff appropriately, executed horribly, and now because of their own policy of not crossing a street, we are, we have dealt with the impacts of that policy and others. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, no?
You can go first.
No, go ahead, Mr. Kessman.
I hear everything you're saying and agree with it 100%. However, I feel like we have to do something about the situation that we find ourselves in. And, you know, having spoken with the manager about it, it seems that if we don't change the routes, we're going to find ourselves going back to just difficulties with Thursday pickup being managed when the weather turns, when there's snow, when it's dark out, when they're trying to pick up the lawn and leaf collection. And I know that this isn't necessarily our problem. It should be Waste Management's problem, quite frankly. But at the same time, we have a service to provide to residents, and as disruptive as this is, I'm just wondering what assurances we have that this actually will solve the problem and we won't have to change the routes again.
So one of the things, well, first of all, we have to rely upon, you know, us and making the, you know, my office and making the decision. And I, you know, certainly appreciate Selectman Kane's comments, and, you know, as he said, we've had these conversations and, you know, the buck stops with us and we have to manage this properly. And, you know, it's why, you know, we're rolling it out when we are. We think this provides us with the most certainty over the next, you know, six-plus months to be able to make these changes and not run on the ragged edge. And it certainly was bid as it was. The opportunity was there to change routes from the beginning, but there was concerns about disruption at that time. So, but that being said, you know, the new, during the transition week, which is not a lawn and leaf week, we start with, we have a lawn and leaf week prior and one thereafter. So we're hitting a week that is a normal schedule, a normal week within our schedule. We will, Waste Management will be dedicating an additional truck on the street every day to make sure that we're providing the opportunity to proactively review the impacted area of the route days, where, you know, in case residents are delayed of putting their trash out, and to ensure there's quality assurance on there. And we'll be working in the field, you know, to provide any assistance and make sure the routes, you know, appear to be cleaned up. We'll also go back into midday and end-of-day reporting from Waste Management to be able to properly communicate back to them, to make sure that we don't miss anything before they head out of town. So additional trucks in the area, back to enhanced communications throughout the day, and doing our best to work with our residents as partners to make sure that we meet these changes is everything that we're going to do to make this as successful as we can.
Anyone else? Just a little bit?
Just a couple of questions, and then I think of concluding thought. If I'm not mistaken, the previous hauler was, as the trucks moved down a street, they were picking up on both sides of the street. Waste Management now is, same street will actually be making two passes for safety purposes. So that extends length of day. So we already had the Thursday route with the previous hauler running five-ish, 5:30-ish?
Later than the other days.
So honestly, there's no way to predict, but my concern is under this, under the way that Waste Management is doing it with making two passes, a pass on each side of the street, which I cannot fault them with. I would think from a insurance, for insurance purposes, for safety purposes, it makes, and as a national company, it's probably much, much safer to do it in that way. But I'm thinking that the Thursday routes, if we don't change them, and we're going to hit daylight savings, we're going to change the clock shortly, we're going to have trucks in the dark on, particularly on Thursdays. And if we think we've had issues with daytime pickups, I'm concerned about what turns into nighttime pickups, and I'd like to eliminate that as much as I can. So we'll never know what would happen this winter unless we let it all pass, but I'm unwilling to do that. These numbers, I mean, to have, to have five, four days of the week at 2,035 or less, and one day of the week at 26, more than 2,600, that's not close. I mean, and I think this balances out much better. Am I going to be concerned that we could have problems? Of course, we all are. We've, I mean, we've been snake-bitten. But I understand the logic that's gone behind this. I think trying to make an emergency correction in the, when we're back on standard time with short days, wouldn't be a good way to do this. So I, I agree that we didn't have a great rollout, and expectations may be low, but we're going to have to work very hard to help the contractor. And I know some folks say, why should we help them at all? But if the contractor performs well, it's to the benefit of all our residents. So I do, I understand your concern, Selectman Kane, but I do not agree with your conclusion that we not move ahead with this.
Could I offer something?
Sure.
I've lived in town 21 years. Many of you have lived here many more years than that. I never knew Thursday was a national emergency in picking up trash in our town. Okay? I find this hilarious. Yes, if the snow started later on Thursday, we did have a debacle. Yet the prior local collector managed to pull it off. The national safety policy, we all want them to operate safely. The reality is Walnut Street near the Tree of Doom at that corner is a different pickup scenario than many, many other streets, where for whatever reason, they're choosing to go up and down a street twice. We understand it, we respect the safety policy, but it is completely, it's not practical in many points, and now it's adversely their service delivery. I don't know, perhaps Waste Management should just review the contract for the provision that allows them to surrender their services and go on to less taxing jurisdictions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anything?
I mean, the, just a couple thoughts. I think that both Selectman Kane and Selectman LeBeau and Selectman Kessman all bring valid points. The issue that I see is that we are where we are, and there were clearly bumps in the road early, and residents were upset, for good reason, as were we, through working and managing the vendor, that the performance has improved. But we are where we're at, and if we don't do anything on Thursday, I think the concern is we're going to have a, we will have a problem. And that will be certain. Understanding the vendor is the vendor, and our prior vendor didn't have that issue. So to me, this mitigates that possibility, and it's also being responsive to the feedback we had early on. We think this will ultimately enhance the service to our residents. With 2,600-plus people on Thursday, with leaf collection, the additional time, daylight savings, I think we're going in with a higher risk of uncertainty than doing this now. I think what's important, it's not an ideal situation. You want to pick a new vendor, they bid the job, they should be able to do it. I think what's absolutely imperative here, given the difficulties we had early on, is this four-week notice period with the three weeks going out door-to-door, communicating, being receptive, and staying on top of the vendor. I think that if the vendor botches this as well, we do have to look at the contract. I mean, clearly, they won't, they're having performance issues. But I think, given where we are today, the realities of it, they are our vendor, and Thursday's so disproportionate to the others, this is the best position going forward to make sure we succeed by balancing out. Not ideal, but I think, given the time that it's taking now and the weather to do it now, it's a better option at this point.
Okay.
Quick question.
Sure.
Are the new trucks, the single-body trucks, are they still on schedule to arrive late December, January time?
They're on schedule, yeah.
First, I'd like to start by acknowledging Mr. Kane's concerns. I share them, I share almost, well, all of your sentiments, but I don't agree that we just wait for another disaster.
The only disaster occurred since we switched haulers.
Well, that may be true, but we don't know what would happen if we switched to any of the other haulers. And I'm not sticking up for Waste Management, but, because there, there is no question that the first couple of months were difficult to be kind. But, and that was relayed to them. I know members of the board know that I met with Kevin and them and, you know, really let them know our dissatisfaction. Things have gotten better. The past several weeks have been relatively uneventful, I think, safe to say. There was one thing where a couple of recycling shot streets were missed, but, so I hear what you're saying, and I would think that a national company, which also has other communities around here, you know, all over the state, should have been better prepared to handle this. I agree with you 100%. I will say that that Thursday route, and quite honestly, we don't, we don't know how the previous hauler was able to manage that. I think with a lot of hustle. But that route is not only big in terms of the number of households. If you look at the geographic area, it, it should have been fixed a long time ago, whether or not the former hauler could handle it or not, because it was just too long a route. So I do agree with you, Mr. Kane, but I think we need to do something to fix it. Initially, if I'm right, Waste Management wanted to wait until they got the new trucks, and then January would not have been the time to do that. I happen to think that, and I know previous hauler did it, I happen to think that, I'm not going to criticize them for their, for their procedures regarding the safety of the employees. I know I've told all of you, my brother's family, his in-laws were in that business, and one of the, and one of the members of the family was hit by a truck picking up, hit by a car picking up trash crossing the street. So it's a real problem. However, they should have anticipated that with the number of vehicles that they had on the road. So I agree with you completely, but I think we need to allow them the opportunity to fix it. Because it's not only to help them, hopefully, the goal is that it's going to help the residents so that they have the certainty and not have to worry when they come home at night whether or not they're going to be bringing their trash in or not. So I think it needs to be done. Extremely concerned about the performance over those couple of weeks because, you know, history's not so great. But I think, I think we need to do it. And I do agree with, with Mr. Samia that if we run into a similar situation that we need to, and as you said, we need, we need to look at our relationship with them if they can't make this work. Because five years of a continued problem is just, it's not acceptable. So I do agree with you, but I think we have to do something.
Ask a question, Mr. Chairman. Why do we have to do something? They bid a contract, they can't achieve the contract as they bid it, let them put another truck on Thursdays. Simple solution.
There is another truck on Thursday.
Let them put another truck on that. Clearly, they either underbid us to get in and then hoped we would do things to make their life palatable, or they are just inept. Let's just go with they're inept. So if all those concerns are true, and we all share the same concerns, and nobody wants to be more wrong than me, by the way, but I don't know why we're asking people to do, to change something in their life when they're doing nothing but paying their taxes and buying their blue bags because these guys bid a contract and can't pull it off. That's all.
However, any of the people who bid this contract could have come in and said that they would use different routes, different days of the week to pick up different streets. They could have changed the routes on July 1st.
And had they picked up on the day at which the people expected to have their trash picked up and the rec... picked up and the recycling picked up, they would have been praised wildly across this town.
You're probably right, but if, if, if this correction does not fix it, we're gonna have to deal with it. But I think, I think we need to do it, and I, I realize it's an inconvenience, but in the end, it should, it should make a difference. And if it doesn't, then I agree with you. You bid the contract, you can't do it, see you later. I, I agree with you. But I'm not ready to do that now when there's a, there's a good chance that we can, we can fix this by balancing out the routes.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying we should terminate the contract. I'm simply saying, they bid a, a contract, I believe these documents were in that contract. If they can't pull it off, it's incumbent on them to put more resources, in my opinion. And, Mr. Chairman, on a related note, Kevin is come, you know, turning himself inside-out and the rest of the staff in order to ensure these residents are, are aware of the change, and he's to be credited for that. I take it Waste Management will be billed for their time, because there'll be an opportunity cost where these people could have been doing something else. We will, we will pay them all week, and they'll be out pretending they're related to a city council ward candidate going door-to-door with placards, because Waste Management can't live up to their contract. I'm done. I'm not here to belabor it, Mr. Chairman, I just, I give Kevin so much credit for having the guts to bring it forward, but I, I don't think we should, I, I don't think our residents should change a single thing in their life until these guys prove they can live up to their contract. Simple as that.
Okay. One last thing. If I, if I followed your list of changes correctly, people are going from a later day in the week to an earlier day in the week. Is that correct? Or did I read it wrong?
Yeah, for, yes, in every instance.
Okay. So, that makes the communication part even more important and more difficult, because it's one thing to put your trash out on Monday and expect it to be picked up, but it's not gonna be picked up until, uh, Tuesday.
I still think this is wrong.
But if you're, if you're a Tuesday customer, and you expect it to be picked up on Tuesday, and the truck comes by on Monday, if the residents aren't aware, there's gonna be a major, major problem. So, I think, I don't know if this is adequate or not, but you might wanna rethink that, because if you were going the other way, I, I, I think it would be less problematic than doing it the way we are. And I know it has to be done that way because of the way.
Well, yeah, I mean, so, like I said, you know, the night, the evening before the new pickup days, every resident will receive a phone call through the code RED system.
Can I, can I interrupt you for a second? You said every resident, but it's every residence on code RED, right?
Yes, well, yeah, I mean, we.
Do we know how many people?
I do not know the answer to that.
Okay, you know where I was going. So, it might have to be a more intense outreach.
I mean, the, the alternative is that residents have to keep their trash for longer than a week, which.
I know that, which isn't, not, not so good.
I know. We, um. The, the reality is, you would never allow that to happen, in all honesty, so you're going to then again respond with either a town truck or call Waste Management, and more of your time is sucked into this, because I, and I mean this, at the end of the day, what you care about is the uneventful provision of town services, Kevin. I give you credit, but you're just, you're hanging out with a tough group to expect them to, to make you look good.
So, anything else?
One more thing. So, I hate to anticipate failure, but if and when it comes to the point where we have changed routes and the garbage recycling does not get picked up, I think it's really important that people call Waste Management. Now, I know that I will spend a lot of time on the Shrewsbury Facebook page, all three of them, trying to figure out where trash didn't get picked up, 'cause I did that a lot in July and August, but it's really helpful if people call Waste Management or they call the DPW and they know their number, their ticket number, so that it's easier to track down where a truck hasn't been and figure out where they need to go back, 'cause tracking people's complaints on Facebook is really tough.
It's almost impossible we found out, didn't we?
Yeah, right? It's kinda crazy.
Okay. All right, so, it, it's the manager's purview to make this call, but is it, am I reading the sense of the board right that four of us agree that changes are made and one does not?
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
We are, do four of us agree? I just wanna make sure that at least the majority of the board agrees that we should move ahead with this.
Well, the best way to find out, I think, Mr. Chairman, is I move, the Board of Selectmen endorse the plan as proposed by the manager for a route adjustment effective August 21st, 2019.
October.
August.
Oh, sorry, October. It says October. I'm thinking, nice, warm summer thoughts.
Retroactive?
Second.
Okay, we have more than a second. Hang for a discussion. Okay. Haulers in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nope.
Okay. We're all hanging out there. Have you gotten to make this work?
That's my goal. I'll do it.
Okay. Next order of business is to discuss memo sent by Mr. Kane regarding possible home rule petition to amend sections of Chapter 4455C, which is the chapter of the law that establishes and basically regulates affordable housing trusts, so.
Mr. Chairman, several weeks ago, you organized a briefing on this question of the trust. Kevin was kind enough to send around the statute governing it, and I spent some time reading it and thinking about it, and have offered for discussion at some point in time, if the board is even interested in having a discussion, some, some changes to it as it might apply to Shrewsbury, whether by a home rule petition or a bylaw or whatever legally allowable means, to have a more integrated and less isolated committee and to ensure that any expenditures are approved by town meeting. I think in essence, it comes down to that, Mr. Chairman. As you know from previous rants, I, I really am fearful of elements of government where you have almost little groups working off to the side, and then all of a sudden proposals come into town meeting, or in this case, not even to town meeting. They risk an approach that is not integrated, they risk an approach where some members of the bureaucracy are aware of what's going on, but elected and appointed officials are not. And I think the idea of having a group that does include members of town meeting, because hopefully they would approve any expenditures, a member of the board, a member of the finance committee, and other people who are involved would ensure the tradition of Shrewsbury continues in that various boards and commissions are talking regularly, they have a sense of what's going on, so that no one is caught off guard when all of a sudden there's a public project announced. Simple as that. You were good enough to organize it, we got the statute, I handed it out last week, I just wanted it to publicly go wherever the members wish it to publicly go, and no more than that, Mr. Chairman. Simple as that.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments, any thoughts? Mr. Samia?
Yeah, just a couple of thoughts. The, before we go to a home rule petition, I appreciate the effort that Selectman Kane's put in this. The, I guess what I'd wanna explore before going to that point is the statute seems to be pretty flexible, and that to look maybe to the statute first, to see what parameters to get to the same point without having to go. To me, it seems the statute, with what I know, and I have a lot to learn on it admittedly, would be flexible enough for us to, this sets sort of the basic parameters, and then we can work at how we want and as we deem fit. So, without going through the long process of home rule petition, that may already exist here, so that's just one thought. And then I guess the second thought is, just in terms of philosophically, before we get to maybe that point, is really see how affordable housing fits with maybe our overall goals as well, so not doing it maybe in isolation, but seeing how this overall fits in, in the long-term goals that our board would like to see accomplished over the next, whatever amount, number of years. So, see how that, that ultimately plays in. But I think that, just a thought, that, that the statute, just from my take, may provide, afford that opportunity with far less work.
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Sure.
I don't care how we get there, so I appreciate my colleagues' comments. I wanted to raise the points of concern that I had in however folks want to evaluate it and offer their own perspectives. Wonderful, thank you. Kristin, you've done a considerable amount of the last few housing production plans and so forth, so perhaps, John, that dovetails at a, at a future meeting relative to how this, this component does or doesn't fit.
Sure.
And I do think we should take a look at the amount of money there, try to look at what that really would do in Shrewsbury, and project out over the next several years with past practice and past experience in mind, as to, you know, what is the next reasonable target for sum of money? I understand there's some impact monies coming in over the past years, but perhaps that, perhaps that projection could be part of a future meeting.
Sure.
Ready, Mr. Kassman?
I thought that your recommendations to have, to involve the finance committee in the town meeting as far as having town meeting members as part of the trust, and also having that trust, members of the trust, report back to town meeting. It took it from being like kind of a left-field concept for me, and kind of brought it back to sort of connecting it to the rest of what we do with our town, with our annual budget, with any money that we're trying to allocate and spend. And I, I think it's a great way to sort of safeguard that money that's there and, and make sure that the assets are used in a way that can stay consistent with our goals and our objectives. And so, I hadn't thought of it that way before, and I, I kind of commend you for the out-of-the-box thinking on that, if there's a way to, to bring it back to town meeting and set checks and balances, I think that was missing.
Thank you. But a concern I have, and I've seen it in other towns, is there you have Kristin at the other end of this table, who's integrated completely in the housing production plan and everything along planning. She may or may not, in some towns, be aware of what this group might be or might not be thinking, and all of a sudden, money is burped out at a project, without any integration to that plan, you know, the, the focus of the planning board or where this board comes in on other matters. So, I just think the more we could, I think one of the successes that dates back before I was even around, was that this town has found a way to always stay integrated and understand where each other was going, so we've avoided those fights and fiefdoms where one body's suing another. And whenever I see these little shadow government entities becoming sexy again, it all, I, I be, I'm very fearful of those little pockets of interest forming in our town. John, okay?
I had a little electronic issue there, but we rectified it.
I should, I have a concern about an affordable housing trust being, they're accountable in the state law, but being more accountable to the rest of the town government, as you said, than, than I would be comfortable with. I, I, I agree with you, but I really think we're getting ahead of ourselves. I really think the issue is, what do we wanna do? How active does the town wanna become in supporting affordable housing in whatever way you can? And there are multiple ways that you could do it. It isn't just buying property. I think we need to have a discussion, a study, we, we gotta come to terms with what we think, we, what the path is gonna be. And if it's gonna be a very expansive path, which could happen under the way the, the state law is written, which is allowed to be amended at the local level, then that's a, that's a big undertaking. But we might not want to do that. We might have, might have a different, we might wanna take a more conservative approach to how we help with providing affordable housing opportunities. And to me, that is what's gonna drive what we would do vis-à-vis a trust. I do think that even the state law does have the provision in it that a housing trust isn't gonna run amok unless one of five members of the board, because there has to be one member of the board on the trust, goes rogue and is completely disconnected from the rest of the board. Town manager could also be appointed as a voting or a non-voting member. I'm not sure that's such a, a great idea if it's gonna be a real active organization, because I don't think, I don't think the manager has time for it. But I, I would just suggest that it's, we think about how we want to go about deciding, it sounds kinda silly, but how we go about deciding what it is we wanna do. Because there, there's no reason, this, we already accepted this law. There is no reason right now where five members of the Board of Selectmen could not be the trust, if all, if it all, all we're gonna do with it is allocate cash to different things. I mean, if, if we're gonna get more involved in that and really come up with an affordable housing program, that's a different story. So, we, we could, we could do this now, we could access the money if we wanted to, but we don't know what we wanna do with the money. So, I, again, I just don't see the point of doing anything with any of this until we know what we're gonna do. Does that make sense?
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Why wouldn't we make sure town meeting approves the expenditure of money?
One of the reasons that they don't do it, and it's set up in the statute, is because the whole point of the trust, similar but not the same as creating a development corp, is they're more nimble, they don't have to follow the same rules, and by, if they're, if they're going to purchase, if they were to purchase, if the trust was to purchase a piece of property and make an offer on it, they could very well lose it because they couldn't react, because they couldn't get a town meeting in time. That, that's the idea of why they don't have to go to town meeting, and it, if you dig into the why, you can see that there's safeguards in it, but I, I don't, I, I, I don't see a problem with, as one of the other towns that has an affordable housing trust, and I, I wanna say it's Arlington, but I'm probably, it's probably the wrong place, they say the affordable housing trust, with the consent or with the permission or the agreement of the Board of Selectmen, and many times, on the key areas where you'd want to have a backstop, in that town, they have to go to the board, but that's a lot different than having to go to a town meeting. So, anyways.
All money's green.
That's true.
I don't see any reason why town meeting is cut out of spending what is today is, I would say, a rather unimpactful sum of money at $500,000, but from what Kristin has rhetorically alluded to, there could be a much larger sum of money, and depending on whether you choose to, well, the variety of paths in which you could actually impact someone's rental amount or the cost of housing, it could or could not be effective. Mr. Chairman, one, one final thing. I remember during the presentation when asked, the individual presenting was quite clear that if this group went out and did try to construct something, it would be subject to the same public bidding laws as the town of Shrewsbury. If I misheard, I stand corrected, but I heard there was, they can play games relative to financing, but they can't build the project. If, if I misheard something, somebody tell me.
You just took it through.
Yeah, so they, they're, they're nimble to, to some extent, but state law still applies to them just as town meeting approves.
You're right, but.
Should expire to their expenditures.
You are correct.
Thank you, I'm glad, I agree.
But, no, but what I was gonna say was, they can partner with a private entity, and, and that's a way that they can do it without going through that whole public bidding process. I'm not saying we should do it or not, I'm just saying that there are, there are, there are other things to do besides buy property, you could buy down mortgages, there's, there's a lot of different things you could, could do. I just think that we need to decide what kind of a housing trust and what kind of an affordability program that we wanna have. The other thing that we could consider to make this much simpler, although we have to figure out how to move the money out of, out of the trust, use it for that purpose, but be able to access it, is our bylaw says that the planning board.
Excuse me, what bylaw?
Our town bylaw.
Which particular?
Our town, the affordable.
Inclusionary trust?
The inclusionary housing.
The inclusionary zoning.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? Said that if you build, what is it, five or six houses?
Five units.
Every five units, you have to provide an affordable unit, whether it's a house or apartment, whatever it is you're doing.
Isn't there a timeframe related to that?
But, I, I don't know, is there? But I don't know, is there?
I thought there was.
It's actually a percent, it's actually a percentage based upon the zoning district. So for five units or greater, a developer must provide affordable units. But the percentage of affordable units is based upon what zoning district they're in. And they do have to provide the units at the same rate that they're building the market rate units.
So therefore, in my case, I would build four houses a year, right, and never get to five? Because then I have to build the affordable.
There's a two-year moratorium on a lot creation. So if it's, if the lots are already created, there's a certain provision. It's a complicated portion of the bylaw.
But the other part of this, you either build a house or you build a housing unit or you provide money to go into this fund. We're not required to provide the option, as I understand it, of putting money into the fund. We could change the bylaw and say every five units you build, I know it's more complicated than that, that you must provide an affordable unit. And we don't have to worry about dealing with the money. There wouldn't be any money coming in. They just flat have to do it. Because honestly, there's been only, what, I think, one or two developments that actually did... Forget the big apartment projects, but as far as a subdivision or anything like that, there's only been one or two that actually provided.
Yeah, there's been about one, two or three development projects that have provided units.
So I just think we need to have a discussion or we need, I hate to say this, but have a group to go out and study this thing, come back to the board and say, you know, these are the options. What do you want to do? And then we can decide how we want to structure a trust. I mean, that would be my suggestion.
And I think the Planning Department has provided the Board of Selectmen with a very comprehensive letter of August 5th that will help lay the framework of how you'd like to move forward. And they provided draft bylaws and the like. So that would provide you with a framework to move forward with that study that you'd like to do.
Any of that? Does that sound feasible to try to come to a consensus on what we'd like to do in terms of affordable housing?
Mr. Chairman, I've achieved my objective simply by having the conversation here this evening on how we deal with it. And now if you and Mr. Samia want to co-chair a select committee and do all that work, I can't wait to read your report.
Let's hold off on that for a moment, but maybe we'll come back at the next meeting and come back with a little more thoughts on how we could move forward.
Great. Motion to table the letter? Is that what we should do, Mr. Chairman?
No, there's no action required, so.
Okay.
I think it was good that you brought it forward, and at least we can start having a discussion. Because I do agree with you. We've been talking about this for however long we've had the Affordable Housing Trust, and not much has gotten done. Okay, item 11, review and act the sign the October 21st special town meeting warrant. Mr. Mizikah.
Mr. Chairman, we are proposing a 10 article warrant for the special town meeting scheduled for October 21st. And I can run through the highlights of each one of those articles, and please stop me if there are any questions. Article one is to adjust the current year budget, the 2020 fiscal budget of the town. There'll be nine adjustments that I foresee at this point. Net decrease in overall spending of about $120,000 due to favorable borrowing related to the Beal project. Article two is, proposes the creation of a special purpose stabilization fund for the benefit of the water system enterprise. This is consistent with Financial Policy A4 in creating enterprise and utility reserve funds and building at least 5% of operating costs into each one of those. There is no funding related to Article two. Article three is the movement of funding that will be certified in free cash related to the water system. As you recall, FY19, which this free cash was generated from, was the final year that this water system revenue was not in an enterprise fund, so we need to make some movements. There is $1,940,000 that has been identified prior to certification of free cash that will need to be moved into water system improvements in that stabilization account and for water quality purposes. Excuse me, the next article will be to transfer available funds for counseling and education services for Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services. There's been some discussion about the scope of this. Right now, I've roughly identified $35,500 for this to support additional operations throughout the course of the year. The following article will be funding historic housing inventory. I've received a written quote for $33,000, perform those services just related to the inventory. Article six will be the appropriation of $16,018 that the town has received through an assessment of transportation network companies, Uber or Lyft primarily, where we receive 10 cents per ride that originates in the town of Shrewsbury. And prior to fiscal years, there's been 160,018 rides generated, starting in Shrewsbury. So that's why we have the $16,018 to appropriate. And that would be appropriated into areas where we could use for the purposes of sidewalk improvements and other programs that support alternative modes of transportation in accordance with the law. Articles seven, eight and nine are zoning-related. The first being cleaning up language as it relates to a recent change from removing a planning board member from the zoning board of appeals. Article eight will be the alteration of the current definition of gross floor area to try to tighten it up and make it clearer and less ambiguous. Article nine is the creation of a definition within the zoning bylaw for a contractor's storage yard, previously only identified within the use table. And Article 10 is the change of the maximum fine for violating any aspect of the bylaws related to public health from $200 to $300.
Any questions on the warrant, any of the various articles?
Mr. Chairman, regarding this warrant and those grants that were recently received, Kevin, obviously, one, the appointments will be made in a relatively short order. When do you fund our portion of that sliding scale?
So it will be included within Article one.
As all of those massinations.
That is, that is correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we have motion to sign a warrant.
I'll move second.
Okay, motion second. All who are in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? For voted? Okay. We have a request for an executive session this evening. We're still going to have that, right?
Correct.
Okay. Then I'll just jump down to correspondence quickly. Item 15 is an email dated September 6th, 2019, from Derek Grillo, struck catering notification of a 12C event on November 2nd at 206 Quincyman Ave. So noted. Item 16 is an email dated September 6th from Derek Grillo, struck catering regarding a notification of a 12C event, October 5th, at 206 Quincyman Ave, South Quincyman Ave. Item 17 is an email dated September 9th, 2019, from Karen Stoyanoff of 8 Alden Ave regarding a no parking enforcement request on Main Street by St. Mary's Church. That's been addressed already through the police chief.
That's correct.
At least at this point, they're satisfied. So noted. Item 18 is an email dated September 11th from the Grants Management, Grants Management grant of staffing for adequate fire and emergency response or wide notification. That's the safer grant for the, for fire positions we just talked about. Item 19 is a letter dated September 10th, 2019, from Epic Bankruptcy Solutions LLC, Beaverton, Oregon, regarding claims filing for Papagino's bankruptcy. I'll actually read that one. Is there any action we have to take on that or just a notice?
We received those notices, and it's mainly managed by the Treasurer's Office to ensure we're in compliance if we need to do any tax. Secure our position for taxes.
Okay, thank you. Item 20 is an email dated September 11th, 2019, from Chandra Rana, 6 Holando Drive, regarding a maintenance issue at Holando Park. And I think I saw that Mr. Esposito responded to that and said he was going to get right on it.
And we have remedied the situation out there.
Okay, thank you. Item 21 is an email dated September 13th from Christine Maury, Executive Director, Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services, Dr. Kevin Mizikah, Town Manager, regarding the SYFS strategic plan. So noted. Item 22 is an email dated September 13th from Derek Grillo, struck catering regarding a 12C event, September 14th, at 206 South Quincyman Ave. So noted. Item 23 is an email dated September 14th from Julie Nason. Advise with sending an invitation to attend the domestic violence vigil. It's on October 16th from 6:30 to 7:15 in the evening at Shrewsbury Town Common. So noted. Item 24 is a letter dated September 16th from Stephanie Herbster, Aggregate Industries, 651 Lake Street, regarding storage tank license. Does this require any action or not?
I'm discussing with the deputy chief if they would need to come and amend their license.
Okay.
For the grass.
Okay, thank you. Item 25 is a letter dated September 19th, 2019, from David Snowden, management analyst. We got in the FY 2019 pay-as-you-throw program, end of year report. Does anybody have any questions on that? Item 26 is an email dated September 19th from State Representative Hannah Kane to the School Committee regarding Student Opportunity Act that was released. I think it was voted on by the House and was ready to go to the Senate.
That's what I heard.
I believe so.
Okay, so noted. Anything else to come before the board in open session? Okay. So. Who reads this?
Want me to read the motion for you?
I noticed the motion. Does somebody need to...
Yeah.
That's not a part of it, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Can I have a motion? Sure.
I move that the board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 6.
Second.
Okay, we have motion second requires a roll call vote. Mr. LeBeau?
Yes.
Ms. Samia?
Aye.
Ms. Cassavant?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. DePaolo, aye. Okay, the board will now convene into executive session pursuant to GLC 30A S21, subsection, subsection A, subsection 6, to consider the purchase, exchange and lease of real, lease of the value of real property for Centec North, 384 to 386 South Street, because an open meeting law, I mean, an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the board. Furthermore, the board will not reconvene back into open session. Good evening.